I've got 10 o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Everyone being present, if everyone will please stand for pledge allegiance.
Hail to be the United States of America, the land of the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and in every being in the US.
Want to welcome everyone and thank y'all for being here. Before we get started, I'll do a little housekeeping, and that is to remind you to turn your cellphones off. If you must have them on, leave them on vibrate. Also, we expect proper decorum in the courtroom at all times. What that means is no screaming, no bursts, no anything like that, and speak only when the chair has recognized you. Go ahead and go on with our agenda. Approval of minutes? We have special meetings.
One second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve minutes. Discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll give Mr. Carter a minute to sit in. Next item is claims. Mr. Carter, are the claims in order?
Yes, sir. The claims have been reviewed. They don't matter to the judge.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Before we go into our reports, we do have a presentation by Mr. Ruben Garza of Lone Star Insurance Services. And sir, I'll ask if you can keep it to about five minutes. We do have a very lengthy agenda, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, we're going to go ahead and just hand out these very brief presentations. We prepared them in a very simple format. Okay, so we're going to look at the PowerPoint first. And basically, Ruben Garza, Debbie Alvarez with Lone Star Insurance Services, and we're here to present just a fully insured versus self-funded option for your health plan that you currently have. And on the first page of the presentation, you'll see a definition of fully insured health plan, which is what you have now, versus a self-funded. On a fully insured plan, you basically hire a carrier, like you have now, United Healthcare. You pay them the premium every month, and they take care of everything. So it's a bundled sort of scenario. You don't see all the moving parts. They just pay the claims. You pay the premium. Under a self-funded plan, you have an opportunity to do the same, but if there's money left over at the end of the year, that money would be yours. So let's get into the third page. Self-funded strategy for health plans is not nothing new. It's been around for years. It's actually increasing more and more now with the high cost of medical. A lot of employers that are upwards of 300 employees are really looking at going self-funded because they're finding they're leaving money on the table. And to that end, if you go to the next slide, it says at the top, snapshot. This is a snapshot of your claims versus your premiums that you're paying, okay? Snapshot, Starr County, premium versus claims report. I was provided with two years of premium and two years of claims that were paid out with United Healthcare over the last two years. In the 2015-2016 plan year, you averaged about 401 employees, and more with dependents, but just employees. You paid out 2.903 million in premium, and the claims that were paid out that year was 1.628. So you can see the disparity. You can see the difference there, that there was some money left over that might have been yours had you been self-funded. If you look at the 2016-2017 plan year, you averaged 382 employees. Again, your premium was at 2.77 million at the end of the year, and United Healthcare paid out 1.6 million in claims.
Can I enter?
Absolutely.
And what happened to that 1.3 million or so?
The carrier keeps.
That was left over. What happened to those money?
The carrier keeps it. Yeah, it's like when you pay State Farm your premium every month. If you don't have a car crash or anything like that, they just keep the money.
Okay, they just keep the money.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Well, yeah, and I'm glad you're here because we have a very, I mean, poor insurance coverage for our employees at this point in time.
Okay.
And it's getting worse.
Well, absolutely. One of the things that you can do when you go self-funded is you have a lot of flexibility to design the plan you want, but you're always wanting to protect the plan to make sure it doesn't get out of control. Because the last thing you want is for it to be very, very rich, and the employees have a lot of benefits, but then you can't afford it any longer, and you start passing costs to the employees.
And I understand, you know, but we, at this point in time, we were offered a very good plan of insurance, and it was the real McCoy. But you can see how much profit they made, you know, by cutting down the services that they had promised to give us.
Absolutely, yeah. And with self-funded, you have more flexibility to design the plan however you want. If you go to the next page, Commissioners and Judge, you'll see just, it's a very, very, very simplistic. I like to use this because it's visual, and it helps you understand really the difference between fully insured and self-funded. If you look at, on the left side, the fully insured is bundled. So you pay right now about a little bit over $200,000 a month in premium, okay? And the first thing that United Healthcare does, and every carrier does, is they buy stop-loss. They're going to protect against that $3 million cancer claim, okay? So every carrier does that, including your State Farm, Allstate. Every insurance carrier buys stop-loss, they're basically spreading their risk, okay? So stop-loss insurance, first thing they do. The next thing they spend their money on is administrative costs. What does it takes to run the plan? Pay the doctors, pay the claims, service the plan, right? All that it takes to run the plan, that's administrative. And then finally, there's the claim bucket. If you look at the claims, that's where they pay claims out of. Now, if you look at on the right side, you'll see the self-funded scenario, and we'll call this unbundled, because now you see the moving parts, and you get to see them at work when you go self-funded. So your stop-loss and your admin fees are still fixed costs that you have to pay every month. But if you look at the claims bucket, it's green, and the reason I put it in green is because whatever's left in that bucket at the end of the year is truly your money, okay? So that's a very simplistic way to explain it. Stop-loss insurance, very quickly. Stop-loss insurance, a lot of groups that have never been self-funded have a fear of going self-funded because they're like, well, what if we have a massive claim that just blows up our entire plan? Well, that's what stop-loss insurance is for, okay? So you're going to buy stop-loss insurance. It's basically a transference of risk. You're going to transfer that risk to a carrier that's going to sell you stop-loss insurance. There's two types of stop-loss insurance. Aggregate is basically, think of it as an umbrella. It insures against total claims exceeding estimated dollar amounts for the plan year. And then specific stop-loss is to insure for an individual claimant that may go over a set amount. Just to give you an example, if you go to the next page, I did a self-funded analysis using your information, your claims, your premiums that you paid out these past two years. There's a group here down the road, Starr County Memorial Hospital, that's about the same size as the county as far as employees. They have about 500 employees, okay? They have been self-funded for some time now, and they carry a higher specific stop-loss insurance, but in this example, I'm going to use 50,000, okay? Now, I was provided with claims and premium for the two years, but I was also provided for the 2016-2017 year, I was provided with all the claims that you all had that exceeded $50,000, okay? So let's focus on the far right column, the 2016-2017 year. In that year, last year, you had 382 average employees. You had 1.601 million in claims, okay? If you look at the bottom right-hand side of the page in white, you have five items there. Those are the five claimants that you had in 2016-2017 that exceeded 50,000. And one of the claimants had 106,000, or 94,071. When you subtract the 50,000 specific stop-loss from those, that equals the 137 that you see up here on the column. So the county would have paid the first 50,000 of each of those claims, and then the carrier would have come in and picked up everything over that 50,000. So that 137,000, that's what the carrier, stop-loss carrier, would have picked up. When you subtract that amount, your adjusted incurred claims are 1.4 million, okay? And if you look at the rows after that, those are your fixed costs. Administrative fee, 142,000. Stop-loss insurance would have cost you 641,000, and your aggregate stop-loss insurance would have cost you 25,000. When you total up those figures, your total cost of a self-funded plan last year would have been 2.272 million. You paid out, in a fully insured basis, 2.77 million for a difference of 504,000. So this is true numbers right here. They're estimated, because we don't know what kind of stop-loss insurance you would have wanted, or what kind of risk you would have wanted to assume, but I'm going to assume at 50,000, you would have probably kept about half a million dollars under a self-funded scenario. Again, with the flexibility to make your plan as rich as you want, don't recommend it, but you have the flexibility, you know, to give and take, because you control that. As far as our services, we work as an agent of record. We do have consulting licenses, so we can act as consultants. Some counties hire a consultant. Hidalgo County hires a consultant, pays him, you know, 40, 50, 60,000, I don't know, a year, to basically do what we do at no cost. We do it at no cost because we'd rather be your broker of record. We come in as broker of record. We handle all your products, including voluntary, including your health plan, and we do the work of a consultant, but we don't charge you that because we'd rather make our money on the commissions, okay? So that's basically some of the services that are included on this final page of the presentation. We basically market all your plans, medical, dental, vision. We find you the best rates. We find you the best plans. Then we negotiate with the carrier using all of the groups that we have, and then we go ahead and negotiate that pricing, and we present it to you all for approval. Once that's done, we come in and design a booklet, like the one that we passed out. That's one of our clients there, City Afar. We immediately design your benefit booklet to tailor to your products, you know, and your rates, and we provide those in hard copy form to your employees during open enrollment, and we provide electronic copies to your benefit staff. We conduct the enrollment meetings. We provide an electronic enrollment platform, so your employees, in like year two or three after we've been here, they can conceivably self-enroll if they want. And then after that, finally, on step three, our full service continues after the enrollment. So after the enrollment, we assign a specific person to your case that follows you for assistance with claims, assistance with billing support, and assistance with new hire orientations, which my guess is you probably have one every couple of weeks or every month. I do want to add that your claims that you have that are running really well, okay, so you paid this much in premium, and your claims are running at about half of that, that doesn't happen by accident, okay? That happens largely due to your staff with the benefits office and the HR that take the initiative to educate your employees to be proactive about their healthcare. They encourage them to get their wellness done every year. The plan covers it at no cost. A lot of people don't do that without their encouragement. So kudos to them, because they're doing a great job keeping employees proactive about their healthcare. Go get your blood work done, because you may be walking around on the verge of diabetes or on the verge of a stroke, because you have high blood pressure and you don't know it. So kudos to them, because they're doing a good job, and it's apparent, because you're running really, really well. And this is the time, if any, to try to go self-funded, because in order to go self-funded, a carrier that sells you stop-loss will need to see two years of claims, and they need to be running pretty well in order for them to take you. So that's our presentation. I know you're tight for time. I have time for questions, but you know, it's your call.
I just want one more question. So in actuality, based on this claim, and these are two figures, correct?
Absolutely.
We all paid 3.2 million dollars over what actually was spent in the insurance, right?
Absolutely. But the way you want to look at it, the way you want to look at it is, without having had two really solid years, like if you guys were running at about 80%, because maybe you had a person with cancer and some other sick folks on the plan, you couldn't go self-funded if you wanted to. So fully insured would be the way to go. I'm here today to tell you, you've had a couple of good years, and this is your in if ever you had one, okay? So, you know, for whatever it's worth, if you want us to take a look at it and take the next step, you know, we're here.
Well, I'm definitely very interested in, because we have been, you know, ripped off with 3.2 million dollars with the precedent insurance company that we have, and the worst issues our coverage I've seen in years.
Well, we're here to design it however you all want.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Garza, we will be, we will be going out for proposals, so I guess just get with Armandina, so she can be on our mailing list.
Absolutely.
And we are very interested in looking at it.
Absolutely. We're here to serve you. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Any other question? Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to our reports. Gas Department.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report is in your package. I really have not much to add to it, except that I'm expecting state auditors any minute, probably by 1:00. I'll have a report on the outcome next month. Everything looks good. I don't expect problems, but then auditors being auditors, they'll always find something. Mr. Science knows about that. I do want to thank Commissioner Alvarez out in public for making available two trucks to us, to the department, extra trucks that he made available to us. It gives us a chance to upgrade our fleet, and it gives me a chance to free up a van that we've been using as part of our fleet. I'm going to turn that van into an emergency response vehicle with everything possible in there. I intend to do that in-house. It won't cost us anything. We've got everything to fix it up within the department. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robins. Transfer station.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. I did put a report, my financial report in the file. Not in major, we've been operating normal. Not in major change. Do you have any question?
Any questions on the transfer station? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thanks, Assistant.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. You have the report in front of you. This is the disposition report for January 2018. The total county-wide collections for January 18th were 5,355,000. In January of 2017, they were 5,560,000. There was a total collection of 205,000 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 1,403,000 more than last year. Our current collections for Starr County for the four entities were 2,908,000. Current collections in January of 2017 were 3,235,000. There was a total current collection of 326,000 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 599,000 more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for January 18th, just for Starr County, were 333,000. Total delinquent collections in January 2017 were 284,000. There was a total delinquent collection of 48,000 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 186,000 more than last year. We have collected 85% of our projected current tax collection for 2018 fiscal year. Projected collections remaining are 1,953,000. Next month's report will include a 790,000 collection from a supplement received in December. Of our collection for, 499,000 will go to the county. That's for our next report. This is just a heads up. On your last page, there's a, from the motor vehicle department, the total collections for the county from October 2017 to January 18th, we have been collecting, we have collected That's on your last page on your report. This is for the motor vehicle. You have any questions?
You say that we already collected 85% of the total collection?
Yes, sir.
And what was the estimated percentage that we were going to collect, or is in the budget?
It's in the budget.
I don't know. What percentage?
I'm thinking it was 95 to 98. 98%.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
What that 85 is, is 85 of the projected collections. So we need to reach 100 in order to be where we're at. Of course, we still have quite a few months, so chances are.
A few months going. So we're still receiving payments, and of course, LimeBarker will, that's when LimeBarker comes in, and then he does the PIs and a lot of.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the current collection, not the estimated current collection that we had, that is estimated in the budget.
Yeah.
You said we collected 85%?
We have collected until now.
85% of the 100%.
Of the 100%. Yes. If you have any questions, you'll feel free to go to my office, and we'll work the numbers.
Ms. Alinas, on the collection, motor vehicle collection, I noticed October, November, December were around 50,000.
A month.
A month, yeah. Then January went up to 284. Is that a typo or?
The 284, let me, let me see. Yes, in October, it was 49,438.75. In November, this is the other amount. December, you have a breakdown. So it's a total of 430, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, 430,240 with 89 cents.
Yeah, but my question is, January, you have 284,000. That is a.
That's the total collection for January.
We collect that much?
Right.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, also, let me expound a little bit on the 790,000. If you all recall, when we were going through the budget, that I mentioned that there was a wind company that had not been picked up by the appraisal district on the far east side of the county. Right as you come out of Sullivan City, if you look to the north, you'll see some wind turbines. That one had not been picked up. I had been told that we were going to receive about a quarter of a million. It really was over half a million. So those are funds, Mr. Carter, that are not in the budget, and they've already been paid.
This is the Mira Solis Wind Farms?
Right.
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Alinas.
You're welcome.
County clerk?
Mr. Robinson.
Any questions? Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Reports on your desk. Total revenue for January 2018, 233,479. That is 1,002 more from, since December. And we have, the report from January 2017 is showing an additional 77,990 more than 2017 to 2018. We have a federal inmate count for, total average of 144 inmates for the month of January. Total count is 251.
Yeah, I'll also want to, to explain a little bit on the, on the US Marshals. That, 231, that's been pretty consistent. If we stay at about 220,000, even if we lose some, we still have, that'll bring in about 2.6 million just on federal prisoners. Where on the budget, we budgeted revenues of 1.6. So that gives us an extra million dollars also that were not in the budget.
Correct.
I just want to make a point of all the monies that were not in the budget that are actually fixed.
Yes, sir.
And again, I commend you, and especially you, and the sheriff for the efforts that you've had, keeping and bringing federal prisoners.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other question? Thank you. International break.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is the report for January 2018. This is the total revenue from traffic. It's 202,726, and we show a decrease of 4,122.50 for the month of January 2018 compared to the month of January 2017. And we show also a decrease of 36,491.50. That's on collections for the month of January 2018 compared to the month of December 2017. And we have other collections of 698.53, which is the grand total of collections for January 2018. It's 203,424.53. Do you have any questions?
Any question?
But it is still steady the same as more than last year, or has it been increasing from last month?
Yes, this is the first month that we show a decrease for the.
Yeah, I was noticing that on the decreases mainly on pedestrian, and that a lot of it has to do with the school, you know?
Oh, yes.
When they come in, when they're off.
Right. Yes, and January is always a slow month for us.
But it's still more money than was projected in the budget?
I think it is, because overall, from in October, we, October, November, we were over by 21,000 and 22,000. December, January, we were under by about 7,000. So we're still doing good.
Any other questions?
Any other question? Thank you. Treasure?
May I approach the podium?
Sure.
Good morning. As of December 31st, 2017, the general fund had 3.3 million. The road and bridge fund was at 661,000. The total amount of funds in all bank accounts was at 14.3 million. We continue to monitor our depository accounts to ensure their safety. We combined, the debt for Starr County was 5.8 million, being 2.8 million more than at the same time last year. The county deposits were well collateralized by the bank at the contract terms. The Starr County unemployment rate from the same time last year to this December 2017 increased by 1.0% to 10.2%. The lowest recorded rate for Starr County is 8.2% on October 2007. Our county labor force decreased by 412 workers, and the number of unemployed workers decreased by 1,080 people. The national seasonally adjusted unemployment rate from the same time last year decreased by 0.6% to 4.1%, and Texas decreased by 0.9% to 3.9%. Starr County still has the highest unemployment in the state. The 2018 budget presented by Commissioner Jaime Alvarez is part of a five-year budget crisis recovery plan with three major components. The first component is to reduce unnecessary spending and allow for capital improvements. Because the cumulative deficit of the county is so large, budget cuts alone in one fiscal year are simply not enough to cover expense. For this reason, the 2018 budget includes the borrowing of a new $1 million tax anticipation note in the revenues. The loan payment being the second component is on track by meeting its payroll loan payment, but to balance this year's budget, the borrowing of a new $1 million note is still pending state approval. It is also necessary to report that if the state does not approve this new note, then the county will have to lower the 2018 budget an additional $1 million. As part of this report, the court is authorizing the investment officers to begin the pre-borrowing process of the tax anticipation note. This pre-borrowing process may take 45 to 90 days, and since the county started this year with a negative fund balance in its operating fund, it is important to take action to prevent another Starr County budget shutdown. The third component is to build an operating fund balance during fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2023. This is only a summary of the report, and the full monthly treasury report is here on file with the county clerk. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I would also like to add that, um, that the budget revenue for the detention center is at two point, two million and twenty thousand. It was one point six, but it was amended to accommodate the full payment of the note. We still have pending, um, indigent care and we still have pending, uh, food for the prisoners, uh, car for the sheriff, uh, gas for the sheriff and other major expenses that need to be accounted for. Thank you very much.
Uh, auditor's report?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to present a report this morning. Um, this is a rather lengthy report. Uh, in the, in the interest of time, I think I will refrain from reading every detail in the report. Um, I'll just hit the high points, uh, for you here and if you have any questions, uh, you can see me anytime in my office or call or email me and I'll be glad to discuss the details with you. Roman numeral one, of the cash balances of the report as, uh, as of January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, the general fund cash was one million, nine hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. The road and bridge fund cash was one million, eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and the payroll clearing cash was nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Roman numeral two shows a, a report of the expenditures in the various, uh, funds and departments. The percent of year elapsed through January thirty-first was thirty-three point seven. That's a hundred and twenty-three days. The total general fund, uh, amount budgeted was seventeen million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two twenty-four. The year-to-date actual amount expended was seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, seven thirty-three, leaving ten million, thirty-four thousand, four ninety-two available and the percent expended of forty-two point ninety-two percent. In the county judges' department, the percent expended was twenty-nine point nine one percent. Over on page two, at the top of page two, the county clerk, percent expended was thirty-three point nine three. The human resources department was at thirty-one point oh five percent. The planning department was at thirty-three percent even. The federal and state programs department was at thirty point six seven percent. The countywide general fund, as amended, was at sixty-three point six nine percent and that high percentage is a result of the loan payment. We, we did pay the, um, that's where the, that's the fund where the two and a half million dollar loan repayment is posted. So, that's the reason for that extraordinary, uh, high expenditure rate there. The contract for nine-one-one services department, uh, percent expended at thirty-one point six eight percent. The county court at law is at twenty-eight point nine seven percent. The two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth district court was at thirty-six point twenty-nine percent. The three-hundred-and-eighty-first district court was at thirty-five point nine nine percent. On page three, uh, the district clerk was at twenty-nine point thirty-six percent. The county attorney was at thirty-seven point thirty-four percent. The district attorney is at twenty-six point six two percent. The county auditor's office is at twenty-six point four three percent. The county treasurer's office is at thirty-one point eighty-eight percent. The tax assessor collector's office is at thirty-one point eighty-eight percent. The building and maintenance department is at twenty-seven point seventy percent. The detention center is at thirty-four point thirty-nine percent expended. The juvenile detention center is at thirty-one point oh seven percent. On page four, the sheriff's department is at thirty-four point two two percent. The nutrition program of all four precincts combined is at thirty-six point three one percent. In the road, Roman numeral three is a summary of the road and bridge fund. The total road and bridge fund consolidated is at thirty point eight seven percent and that consists of, of the four precincts there. Precinct one, thirty point five four percent. Precinct number two, thirty-four, thirty point eight four percent. Precinct number three, thirty-seven point oh eight percent. Number four at thirty point eight one percent and the, and the road and, and the countywide road and bridge fund at twenty-five point eighteen percent. On page five, Roman numeral four, uh, the expenditure report for the enterprise funds, the international bridge is at twenty-four point nine percent. The gas operating system is at twenty-seven point four three percent and the solid waste transfer station is at twenty-seven point three eight percent. At the bottom of page five, Roman numeral five is a summary of the revenue reports. Again, compared to the percent of year elapsed, percent of year elapsed of thirty-three point seven percent. The general fund, uh, current taxes are seventy-three point eight seven percent. Delinquent taxes are at thirty point eight one percent. The nutrition program grant was at twenty-five point eight, twenty-five point five eight percent. The indigent defense grant is at zero. The nine-one-one services grant is at zero. The fees of office revenue is at thirty-two point four seven percent. The detention center is at twenty-one point thirty-seven percent. The international bridge transfers are at twenty-one point four three percent. The gas system transfers are zero. The, uh, transfer station transfers are at zero and the, uh, proposed financing, no payable, is at zero. And again, let me point out, this is, this is cash, uh, this is a cash basis. This is actual cash received, not, there's no, there's no accrual or, or in these, in these numbers. In the road and bridge fund, um, the current tax revenue percent received is at seventy-four point seven eight percent. Delinquent taxes are at forty-one point three three percent. Motor vehicle licenses are at zero and I'm investigating that because we've, we've heard the motor vehicle collections, uh, described by the tax assessor collector. Apparently, there's an accounting system anomaly there. The, the money's in the bank, it's just not, apparently not posted to the correct fund and my staff and I will get that corrected shortly. The fines and forfeitures are at fifteen point eight four percent and the vehicle weight fees are at fifty-two percent. The international bridge, uh, the tolls are at twenty-seven point five nine percent year-to-date. The rent from Ueta is twenty-five percent collected and the rent from the port facility is thirty-two point one seven percent collected. The gas operating system, the percent received is twenty-five point eighty-five percent of the budgeted amount year-to-date and the solid waste transfer station is at twenty-eight point seven three percent. At the, on page seven, Roman numeral six, uh, this is a summary of the condition and year-to-date operating results of the Starr County Self-Help Center. This department is budgeted as a special revenue fund, which means that the department is meant to be wholly or partially funded by grants from third parties. The self-help center budget is attached as exhibit A. The self-help center's primary grant is from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars, effective from December one, two thousand and fifteen to, to December one, two thousand and nineteen. The grant uses of funds are listed in the exhibit, exhibit B, uh, attached to this report. The grant requires matching funds contribution of forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents by Starr County over the four-year grant term. As of the date of this report, no grant funds have been received. Therefore, for the last two years, uh, the Starr County General Fund and the Countywide Road and Bridge Fund paid all of the operating expenditures of this department, even though such expenditures were not and are not budgeted in the general fund or the countywide road and bridge fund. The following table provides information as of January thirty-first on this, on this department. The grant received, uh, budgeted was three hundred and fifty thousand, percent received is zero. The housing preservation grant, budgeted was seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, percent received is zero. In the expenditures, the budgeted amount was four hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand. Year-to-date expenditures are thirty-one thousand, nine oh three for a percent expended of seven point six one percent. And then, the department owes the general fund for past payroll of two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-five and the department has two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents cash in the bank. Monthly payroll, uh, the monthly payroll is seven hundred thou- seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, which of course adds to the due-to general fund every month and the projected due-to the general fund amount at September thirtieth at the end of this fiscal year, uh, will be two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Furthermore, there is in the countywide general fund a line item titled self-help center expense in the amount of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This line item is meant to accomplish two purposes. One, it satisfies the required matching funds contribution for the TDAHCA grant and two is it intended to be seed money for the home rehab projects that would be funded by the grant on a reimbursement basis. However, since the self, self-help center owes or will owe the general fund payroll clearing account approximately two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, uh, as of this coming year-end, September thirtieth, uh, the seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars should be used to offset the deficit owed to the general fund. Therefore, if this offset is done, the grant will fail because there is no seed money to start the home rehab, rehab projects required and reimbursed by the grant. The problem for Starr County is that ultimately, the general fund will have to absorb the loss created by the self-help center. This loss is not currently budgeted in the general fund and since the self-help center payroll is a cash expenditure, uh, the general fund will have a cash deficit of approximately one hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars at year-end. Roman numeral seven, at the bottom of page eight, um, is a list of invoices that are being held by the auditor's office because there are insufficient funds in the respective budget line items, uh, to pay the invoices. I won't, I won't read the details of, of, of all the specific invoices. You can read them and determine the, uh, the, uh, the county fund, the line item, the vendor, the invoice date, invoice amount and date approved by Commissioner's court are all shown there and that list goes through, um, goes through the end of the report on page eleven. Also included in this report is the certification of revenue dated February the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen to certify the additional proceeds of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and seven cents, uh, from the federal prisoners held in the Starr County Detention Center. And if the court will remember, uh, this was the additional, uh, budget amendment that was passed last month to pay off, uh, to pay off that loan at Lone Star National Bank. So, now, you know, the official certification is, is, is part of our permanent record. Any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Carter. On the self-help, so you're, if I understand correctly, you're saying the self-help without the seed money cannot function, is that correct?
That's, the, the grant purposes cannot be fulfilled, that's correct, yes.
Okay, and currently, it owes the general fund, uh, to the tune of about two hundred and ten thousand?
Uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, yes.
By the end of the year, it'll owe two hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes, sir, that's the projection.
Okay. You know, uh, it amazes me how Mr. Penneygo elaborates about getting loans, getting loans, more money, more money and yet something like this is not brought to our attention, that we're throwing money into a black hole. You know, it, you know, it, it really bothers me because it seems like we're not doing what, what we were elected to do and that is to look out for the interest of, of the citizens of this county.
I think it was brought to your attention just about seven or eight years ago.
Yes, and I was gonna mention that.
I'm fully aware of that.
Some years back, it was brought to our attention, uh, by Ms. Gerda. It was brought to all of us' attention, that the self-help owed to the tune, I don't recall exactly, but I think it was the exact number and I don't have it with me, but it, I think it was around two, uh, seven hundred thousand that it owed. I don't know that that was ever paid either.
Well, Your Honor, let me elaborate on that. You, you're aware and I'm aware that the, the self-help center just have very small amount of administrative, administrative monies coming in and we know that. And you and I and everybody had agreed that the, there was only twenty-five thousand dollars coming in as administrative funds, okay? The rest is the, the portion of the, uh, county share to pay for those employees and all the, the FICA's and insurance and this kind of stuff. It is the purpose of providing services to the community, housing rehab, all these services that we got there and you're aware and we, and I'm aware that we agreed that we're gonna put in some money, just like the nutrition program doesn't have admin's money. Not all the, the personnel at the federal and state program have administrative money. We put the share from the county funds though, but it's not budgeted correct. You, you and I met, Mr. Carter, and explained to you what the deal was. You know, we only have in the self-help center, twenty-five or twenty-six thousand dollars a year of administration that comes in. The rest is the county portions and we had agreed to that.
Okay.
Commissioner, the, the, I don't know where that twenty-five thousand dollar figure comes from.
You and me met with a hundred thousand dollars in four years.
Well, but the year-to-date payroll is over thirty-one thousand.
Let me tell you something, last year, two thousand and sixteen, and, and I met with the personnel, we have a plan of action last week to the, and I told her, "Look ma'am, you guys are making it so difficult to make the self-help center operate because of your restrictions." First, last year, two thousand and sixteen, we started the, the project. It took them nine months to, to, to accept the, 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 what do you call it, the environmental, uh, deal that they had to do, nine months. When it came up to that, then we, the, the budget was not done, so we couldn't do nothing. And then they changed our administration and changed all the formats. One year was gone, nothing could be done. And I told the lady today, "Look," yesterday, I bet it was her last week, I said, "Look ma'am, if we can't get this thing operated, then there's no use to have the grant going because you guys make it so difficult to get this monies available to the people, so why should you have a, a, a project offered to the community when you're gonna make it work?"
Mr. Penney, please sit down.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm just, I'm just reporting, I'm reporting the numbers as the, as the auditor should do.
Yeah, and, and we commend you for it, Mr. Carter.
What commissioners do with it and I'm, you know, and if there's, you know, if we need to discuss this further, I'm, I'm available. My staff and I will, uh, be glad to, you know...
See, the, the issue that I have is that, you know, you brought up the fact about federal and state programs. Federal and state programs are working. They're, they're bringing in, they're, we've got projects working, you know, so the money that's being used is being used to benefit people in, in the community. My, from what I read here, for the last two years, we haven't done anything in self-help and yet we've been pouring money into it.
There's been no houses rehabbed.
Nothing, nothing.
There's been no, there's been no activity for the...
But that's not this?
Do you have a self-help?
No, no. No, 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 that's a...
Self-help is run by Commissioner Garcia.
But we have, we have had a lot of houses being rehabbed, this is, I mean, we have done a lot of rehabs through the whole county on the program.
Well, there's none in the last two years, I know that.
Like I said, no, last year, but we just started this year, you know, and we have an action plan, and I told the lady, "If you guys can't cooperate with us to make this thing work, then we don't need the project."
Well, this is not an action item, this is just a report. But, but the, you know, we can put it up for action at a later point.
Your Honor, Commissioner Garcia, you're over, sure, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia, if we want for you to get with Mr. Carter and the judge, and how are we gonna come up with this?
I already met with him, and like I said, and the judges are aware, we had agreed to that, you know, that we were gonna pay the salary of, and you're aware, Judge, we talked about this.
Yeah, but... Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand?
Right.
Is it what's showing the numbers here?
There was seventy-two thousand dollars of administration coming to us, said that was a hundred and something, right?
We had never agreed, Commissioner, that we would be pouring money into something that we're not getting anything in return. And for the last two years, we just heard, we haven't gotten a penny worth of work into the county. So that, we never agreed to.
Well, I'm sorry, we have services out there, Your Honor, that we have been doing.
Well, again, we're looking at the numbers that the auditor brings, and that's all we have.
And only a perfect example, right now, we got the people that house, burned down, we are housing it right now, at this point in time, by the self-help, providing food, shelter, and clothing to them. So don't tell me that you're pouring money, that's not contributing. We have the tool room, we have the computer classes, we have the...
You know, Commissioner, Mr. Carter just said, "We don't have any money." You have two-hundred dollars in the checking account. How can we be doing all this without any money?
Just, let me tell you, he's talking about the administration money that we have, because just like Ms. Geller was doing, charging to the grant that doesn't have any administrative funds.
Is that so, Mr. Carter? Is that administration, or is that the program itself?
The budget, the budget provided in the grant is attached as Exhibit B in your file there. Let me get my glasses back on. The grant is budgeted fifty-six thousand dollars for public service, residential rehabilitation, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, administrative planning and management, a hundred-and-five-thousand, and again, this is for a four-year, these numbers are for the full four-year term. So in effect, the administration budget would be about twenty-six thousand dollars a year.
Right.
And the residential, the rehabilitation would be about a hundred-and-fifteen thousand a year.
And the only year that...
Let me get this straight, so the well ran dry two years ago, am I correct, that's what I'm hearing you?
Yes, the well ran dry about a little over two years ago.
And we don't have no more grant money coming in, so the bleeding's gonna be taken care by the General Fund, am I correct?
Yes, sooner or later, the General Fund is gonna have to absorb the loss.
The only thing that is there is the administration that we have, just like the one we got funded like this, every office that we have, it's service that we provide.
Your Honor, Mr. Carter, Precinct One has no need for self-help, so you gotta figure out a problem, I don't want those money on the precinct side, I don't have no need for it.
Well, again, it's not an action item, this is just a report.
That's correct. Put it as an action item and come to discuss.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Okay, next item is to approve the vendors list, Mr. Carter, is that?
Yes, sir. A few vendors have all been reviewed, all the documentation is in order.
Motion to approve new vendors.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight.
Item eight, you know, there's on the table, they're not ready to appoint anybody yet.
Okay, moved in second to table. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is an action item, and this is to adopt the countywide burn ban.
I move the way, move the burn ban.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten, it's just house cleaning, and this is to authorize the treasurer to transfer monies from countywide to road and bridge.
That's what we move, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item, and this is to designate a non-quorum committee that is required to evaluate proposals for certified public accounting firms. For Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. The law requires that we put this contract out for bids for CPA firms to audit our financial statements, and there needs to be a non-quorum committee of Commissioners and other officials that the county might report, I might care to appoint, to open the bids and make the recommendations to the full court for selection.
They, how many member of committee is this supposed to be?
Traditionally, it's two Commissioners and the auditor and the judge.
Well, we have quorum.
We have quorum.
Well, that would be, well, in that case, you could put the treasurer or some other county official knowledgeable, knowledgeable accounting.
How about two-hundred and fifty, Mr. Garcia, and Mr. Canales?
I'm just asking, I'm asking, you know, I'm asking the court to appoint.
Okay.
I move we appoint Commissioner Peña, Commissioner Garcia, Victor Canales, and Mr. Carter.
Okay. Moved in second, that was Commissioner Garcia, Peña, Carter, and Canales. Okay, I have a motion in the second, Commissioner, in the second?
Yes.
Discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twelve is a preliminary approval for Las Nortias Commercial Phase One, Mr. Garcia.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to present for preliminary approval for, this would be for Las Nortias Commercial Phase One. It's on Commissioner Garcia's present, saying that Rancho Santo Domingo, in front of eighty-three.
I don't feel wrong, Your Honor. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is also preliminary approval for Las Nortias Phase Five.
I just move.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And item fourteen is an action item.
No, it will be a preliminary, Your Honor.
I'm sorry?
Fourteen is a preliminary also.
Preliminary, yeah.
San Tex work, but it's beyond our, Mr. Garcia, please.
That move we approve.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen is an action item, and this is to approve additional personnel for 2018 primary election.
Good morning, Judge, morning Commissioners. Yeah, just additional personnel for the early voting primary elections.
I move we approve the election.
The early voting?
Yeah, this is for early voting.
Oh, okay. I just move.
Well, I have a motion from Commissioner, I'd like to second by Commissioner Garcia, discussion.
The reason you're doing it, because some people from the original list told you no, right?
Yeah, they said no, so we had to find new people.
Discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen is to amend notice of election. What's the...
Uh, we went back to our original site on Precinct Two, Old City Hall Building, and we added the extended hours. That's...
That be a Saturday?
Um, we haven't got any petitions yet.
No Saturday?
Just for extended hours.
So what are the extended hours?
On Wednesday, it's gonna be from seven to seven. It's gonna be on the 21st and on the 28th, both Wednesdays.
The 20th, what's it, then?
Excuse me?
The, two days, the Wednesday and...
Wednesday and on the 21st, and Wednesday, the 28th. It's gonna be on the main, here at the courthouse, seven to seven.
Only with that day?
Yeah, it's only for Starr County Commissioners Court.
So the rest, the site would be closed?
Yeah.
The early voting?
No, for the extended hours, it's gonna be seven to seven, uh...
Only here at the courthouse?
Yes.
Why not in the other areas?
It's only allowed in the main polling place, which is the courthouse.
Could you say something about precinct?
Yeah, we went back to the polling site, Old City Hall Building's not gonna be in the community. Yeah. And that's it.
Is there... No.
Which is the Old City Hall?
Uh, the Old City Hall downtown?
Downtown?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we changed it from the Old City Hall.
Yeah, but we didn't get the final approval, so we went back to the Old City Hall.
To the Old City Hall?
Yes.
Do they stand out when we're here?
Yeah, here.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seventeen is to ratify Texas Department of Transportation fiscal year 2017, Fifty-three Ten Project money.
That is correct, sir. It's for the Tech Stop, and these, it's a ten-thousand-dollar preventive maintenance, and these are gonna be for all Fifty-three Ten vehicles that were funded by Tech Stop.
All Fifty-three what?
Fifty-three Ten vehicles. Yeah.
What is, what is it gonna include, what?
Uh, all preventive maintenance, any, if you need, if the vehicle breaks down, it's gonna be covered by the grant, by this particular grant.
I move we ratify it.
That is correct.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item, thank you, ma'am. Item eighteen is an action item, and this is to designate landfill road as a public road.
Commissioner, Mayor Valdemar Garcia has been on this for a while. I told him he was, he would never find any minutes where this, this is the old landfill entrance. So I wanna, I wanna make a motion, Your Honor, to designate it as a public road, so you can put an end to this. I move we designate it as a public road.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item nineteen is an action item to approve five streetlights.
Yes, Your Honor, I have some lights that are very, I mean, I need some lighting due to areas close to the river, so that's why I'm asking for this. So a motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty is also an action item, and this is the extending of Castillo Lane in Fernando Salinas subdivision.
This is a road that, make anybody ask them when to designate it as a public road. I wanna make a motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-one is an action item, and this is to accept the lease payment from Echo Site in the amount of a thousand to be deposited in Starr County Nutrition.
Make the motion to approve. Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items twenty-two through thirty-one are budget amendments, Mr. Carter, they in order?
Yes, sir, they've all been reviewed and all in order, sir.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-two is an action item on Starr County Building Property Use Policy by Mr.
We submitted to you a proposed building and property use policy. We've had a policy manual for our employees for quite some time now. This is kinda sort of bringing us to the front, a little more into the future, if you will, more to the times of where we're at now. Currently, as it stands, if I decided this morning that I was gonna bring my trailer with cattle, park in our parking lot, take up twelve spaces, really, there's nothing that the Commissioners Court or Sheriff's Office could do. It's to designate parking areas. Additionally, it helps to establish what's permitted and not permitted on county property with regards to signage. Up to now, we've kinda sort of been taking an ad hoc approach where we just wing it. You can't put signs on this part right here, and you can't actually stand here and do this over here. We can't have vendors coming in and doing this, but we haven't actually codified it, we haven't actually made a policy of the county. As it stands right now, a vendor could not come into the courthouse, but could go to Commissioner Peña's county offices. This kinda sort of sets everybody on the same plane and takes care of everything. Additionally, Commissioners, what it also does, each of you all have, as what we've seen this morning, times are tight, money's lean. One of the things that each of you have are buildings that are rented out for, to the community, and basically, those monies would be funneled into our General Fund for use for the county as well, bringing proper accounting procedures to that matter as well. So that's what this is for, Commissioners, we'd like to submit it for approval. The Commissioners Court retains control and ultimate say in all these matters, frankly.
What is it that you have? I mean, specifically, you're saying that you have people that are renting buildings to the county?
For example, Commissioner Peña, I believe yourself, and I think also Commissioner Alvarez and Mr. Science, each of you have sites that are used for parties.
I hope I don't...
Well, I think there's the area where the basketball court's at, the, under the cochera, there's a little cuartito.
It is open.
Okay, well, areas that could be used theoretically for parties. Essentially, we've had, at this point, you could say it's eighty-five dollars, Commissioner Peña would say it's a hundred and forty-five dollars per hour, and there's no standard whatsoever. Commissioner Science could then say, he's gonna just give it to whoever asks him for it, they know him. There's no oversight whatsoever by the court in general. This uniforms that everybody, todos hijos de Dios, todos hijos del Diablo, basically.
Well, we built, and I wasn't one of them, but I built those buildings to provide services to the community, and we don't charge them, we let them borrow them.
I understand.
So, you're trying to tell me that we cannot do that anymore?
You could, it could come before the court, and the court could go ahead and decide to do that. That's absolutely within the purview, absolutely. You were taking, you continue to have control over these things, it doesn't take the control out, it just standardizes it, makes it more transparent.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know.
But you would not be able to do it unilaterally, like, you, like, Commissioner Peña would not just be able to decide, "Well, I'm gonna let this family go ahead and use it for free," and no one's gonna find out about it. It would be brought before the court, and everybody would know, Commissioner Peña would advocate on behalf of that family, or whoever that person is, because it's a party for a five-year-old.
Oh, let me ask you something else. So let's say in Commissioner Peña's place, or Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Science don't have any, I don't think so.
Sorry, see...
But I do, so if I say, and these people come out here and said, "I wanna use this place to do a party or whatever," and three Commissioners decide to pick and choose who they wanna lend it to?
Yes. Not who they wanna lend to, the conditions. There's a process.
We're gonna let him, let him use it free.
Correct.
We offer it free.
Correct.
And if they don't want to let it, let it use for free, so, and then next, they, next day, somebody else comes in, and they decide they wanna let it, let the place be used for free, they can do that.
Yes.
And charge the other a hundred dollars.
Correct. That would be more transparent, yes, it would be here in front of the public, and everyone would know that the Commissioner would be doing that.
It wouldn't be fair for every citizen in the county, if you go and just pick and choose who do you wanna charge or who you wanna let, let it free.
That is the point of standardizing it, that's why we would like to standardize it, and set a, you know, the court sets a fee to clean, how much it would cost, each of you know how much it costs to clean your locations.
It would be like a deposit for free, when they come in?
Yes.
The reason I put a stop to it, Mr. Garcia, is because we are competing, the county's competing with the private industry, and there's no way that those saloncitos can compete with us with tax money, and they have to do it on their own.
Correct.
We need to put a stop to the whole thing. There's no way that those saloncitos, we're killing them.
Correct.
We're killing them, that they don't have no business, because we lend them for free, free, free.
Correct.
That's a good point, Commissioner.
Well...
It basically brings transparency, Commissioner. You could choose to do that, you could choose not to, everybody could be all... You could choose to do that, you could choose not to, everybody could be all at the same level, minimum amounts that are required to clean. You know, there is county expenses that go into it, the power, the light, the cleaning of it. Certainly, we don't want to take advantage of consumers, but at the same time, we don't want to spend county money.
We're trying to provide service to the people, you know, so you're trying to say, you know, we need to deprive them, because these buildings are built by taxpayers' money for them to use and for us to facilitate something that they can't afford out on the, on the, on the private industry.
Correct, Commissioner, but at the same time, we don't give handouts, we would like to at least recoup for the county itself the expenses that go into cleaning it.
Right, okay.
And the light that's used to power.
Now, let's go back to that, I'm glad you brought that up, okay. So, let me tell you, so the county, listen, the area, I quit lending mines out for a while, because I need to get this straightened out. Who's going to come in, they say they were used Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, which, and there's a complaint right now, because, who's going to come in at, at one o'clock in the morning, when they get done on a Friday afternoon, Friday night, and the thing is lent out for the Saturday, who's going to come in at one o'clock to clean up for the rest of the people to come in and use it next day?
And that's exactly what you, you as a Commissioner would have to decide and figure out what it would take to get there. If it's going to be to pay a person a hundred dollars, then you know you're going to have to ask the person that's using it to deposit a hundred dollars to get those people to come out there and clean it. Because you're correct, I agree with you, it is very difficult to get people out there at one, two in the morning to clean it, but if we're going to be giving it, then we're going, we're drawing the county deeper in debt, that's the problem with that.
I understand, so you're trying to tell me that if I go out there and let them borrow this, this facility, and I set a fee for a hundred dollars, and who, do we have to go out on bids or select somebody who wants to do it?
Oftentimes, that would be on an ad hominem basis.
What?
Basically, as we go along, these are things that would be worked out in the first three months, first times of uses, we would figure that out. Usually, it'd be contractors, you don't have to go out for bids on something like that, unless we would be awarding a massive bid.
A hundred dollars to clean up, you can select somebody, or?
You could contract with them, basically, unbid work, contract with them for a short time.
I would recommend that we form a committee, like, for example, I have two, I have the Nutrition Center and the Star, I mean, Salineno Community Center. If they need it, come down to Star County, to the Annex, we have our committee, they can rent it there, so we don't have any problems with it.
Correct, you all, that's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, that's the easiest way.
That's the formula that we've used in this policy, we submitted it as such, to where it's centralized.
Why would you come to the, to the, to the Annex?
But there's going to be the same thing. We're going to have to pass it to Commissioners' Court.
The community, they could come to you, Commissioner, and you would submit it to the County Judge's Office as administration, and that gets presented to Commissioners' Court. The idea is to permit that the matters, and to do that way, go ahead and standardize everything, make it easier for you all, quite frankly, take the pressure off of you all.
There is no pressure for me, I, we can, we can handle the work, you know.
I understand.
We have done it all the time, so I got two places, and the people that I built to provide services to them, not to make money off of them, you know. Like I tell you, you know, they're, we can, they cannot go out there and rent a hall out there for a thousand dollars on an event, when they, they resource something back into, into their own use of the taxpayer money they pay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a motion in a second, so I'll go ahead and call for the question. All in fair, please, aye.
And what's, and what's a motion, for what?
To approve it.
To approve it.
The whole package.
The whole package.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Honor. Item thirty-three is an action item on electioneering in Star County Courthouse and other county sites for early voting, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes, sir, I'm here to, and I have asked our attorney, we don't know specifically.
Well, Mr. Garcia, before we go any further, you don't have the authority to get someone to speak, this is not a forum, this is an action item. The chair is the only one that can ask anyone to speak, so present, present your argument.
So what is it that can and can't, we don't know anything about the policies that you all, we don't know what, who's going to enforce it? What is it that can and cannot be done, you know? Mr. Canales, I've tried to call you and try to see, get with you, see what are the, the policies that you all adopted, and what can and cannot be done in the, for the early voting or in the present election day?
I think it, what can and cannot be done is on the policy themselves, Commissioner, that basically says no electioneering. It speaks for itself, I'm not sure what the, the question is.
Well, the thing is that we need to know from you, what can and cannot be done.
There cannot be any electioneering, you cannot be loitering, you cannot be essentially pressing the flesh on county property, there cannot be intimidation of voters, you cannot have barbecue pits in parking lots. Sinage can be on vehicles in parking areas.
So you can be, how about if I get my truck with stickers of my candidate, and I go driving to my office?
If you park in your office to do business for your office, absolutely, that's permitted.
It's county property.
It's permitted, Commissioner.
It's permitted.
That is permitted.
Let me ask you something else, if somebody comes by and stops there where I'm at, and asks me that he needs help to go in and vote, can I go out to help her vote?
That would be up to the presiding judge, if you're assisting, that'd be up to the presiding judge, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so I can go out there?
If it's permitted, yes.
And who's going to enforce this, this election?
Because this is county property, it would be considered as a criminal trespass, essentially, it would be the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, and are they trained for that, what is it or not?
They're licensed police officers, Commissioner.
Okay, let me, so who can we, or I, can go to, to complain, apparently, it's that you all, because you set the rules, in case any violations of the voters being denied, or whatever, to go out there and vote?
Denial of the right to vote would be the presiding judge first, if that is unsuccessful, then certainly, my office, an officer from my office, or the District Attorney's Office. If that's unsuccessful, Commissioner, then the Attorney General's Office as well. And that's the area, if the voter is being suppressed, if it is not being allowed to vote, those are issues that would need to be addressed. And finally, not for enforcement purposes, but for maybe some sort of advice, the Secretary of State.
Judge, I want to say something, Mr. Canales.
Yes, sir.
It's been brought up to attention that the Presiding Justice will have a problem, because their, their power, their authority is within the election code.
Correct.
Anything out of the hundred feet belongs to this policy.
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner.
So don't get the Presiding Justice in trouble, have somebody there, have the attorney partner, have someone out for the others, because they cannot enforce anything beyond a hundred feet.
You are correct, I was, I was just addressing what Commissioner Garcia was asking me specifically on his question. But yeah, that's, that's the plan, is to have some, some sort of presence. No, we don't, certainly, they're already volunteering their time, and we don't want to, to put any more burden on them.
Let me throw my three cents worth, I've had no less than twenty people approach me and commend the court for doing this. They claim, and some of these are professional people, that they go, that a lot of times, they hesitate to go vote because of the environment at the polls, and that they're very thankful that the court decided to do this. Not one person has complained to me about it, not one. So I really think it's a very good thing.
Well, I'll tell you, Judge, I've had a lot of people complaining to me about this, you know, what's going on, because people out there that need some help, and, or that want to be advised on what's going on, and it's the worst thing they've ever heard about.
We're breaking the policy, election here, right here. Both parties, you're not advocating for it. Both parties.
We're just making comments.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. So I don't know what.
Well, I just, I wanted to make sure what they had in mind, because they just hand you out a book, you know, and I'm not an attorney to read what they have wrote down, and I can't, I can't interpret the law that they, they're, they're, that they're writing, they're interpreting.
No, no action needed on item thirty-three. It is eleven-twenty, and pursuant to section five-five-one point oh-seven-four, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and possible action of adding volunteer firefighters to the workers' compensation.
It's eleven-thirty-five, and we're in open session, under order of salaries, is there a motion?
I move we approve the order of setting.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-five, which was the worksman coverage, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second motion, Your Honor.
That's to approve to add them to the work.
Worksman comp.
Yes, sir. Is that your second?
Yes, sir.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, I second.
Moved in second, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.